Let's call the, to order the regular meeting of the school district of the city of Dearborn. And first item, please.
Local Hussein Barry here. Farouah Hamud.
She's at a conference on our behalf in Hartford, I think.
Mary Lane. Mary Lane.
Here.
Celia Nasser.
Here.
Mary Petrikoff.
Here.
James Thor.
Here.
President Mead.
Here. Next item?
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Mr. David Higgins, Principal of William Ford Elementary, will introduce students who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, everyone. President Mead, Trustee, Dr. Maliko. What an honor it is to be here tonight at William Ford. And I have Mr. Cruz with me, as well as Mr. Langton, our administrative intern.
And we have Ala Alasedi, Dahlia Alamari, Alzara Harvey, and Mohammed Fardous, who are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very well done. I have a little certificate for you. You are... You dress so beautifully.
Yeah, they really are.
Dahlia.
Looks great.
You dress beautifully. And Alzara. Nice job. And Mohammed. Very well done.
Good job, guys.
Good job, guys. Good job.
Good to be with you next.
This is the meeting. Thanks.
Well, they can do the meeting.
Thank you very much for putting them together. Next item, please.
Superintendent's Updates, Agenda Items.
So, good evening, everyone. We do have, I want to point out, for ratification with the ADSA principal contract, we have a tentative agreement that was approved by their membership by a large majority, so that's on the agenda for tonight. Also, wanted to mention that we're asking for a October 29th study session. We're trying to plan in advance, and I want to tie this to the Infrastructure Committee. We will be, we've been meeting, and the board has directed us back in March, to put together a committee to look at infrastructure needs within the district. And so what will happen is it will be a series of meetings starting on August 1st, and it'll go into October with a study session on October 29th, and then hopefully recommendations, you know, will be presented that the board could potentially look at for November, and any changes possibly into December. So I just wanted to get that timeline out there, and so our team has been working on that. We have Metro Bureau will be the outside consultant overseeing that process, and then the two co-chairs will be Mr. Tom Wall and Dr. Josh Tyne. He's the ADSA president and principal over at Nowland. And so some of the issues that will be discussed on that include, as I mentioned, infrastructure current needs. We have about $170 million list that Mr. Wall has put together of needs within our old buildings. School safety, we'll be looking at that. We'll be looking at capacity, including the Berry Center, and also possibly Etzel Ford, and then also be addressing the suggestion of a fourth high school or ninth grade options. Those will be on the Ninth Grade Academy. Adequate funding, and then the air conditioning. I wanted to mention that because I know that has also been an issue. So we have talked about moving forward with interim relief. Right now, we have the budget for about $400,000 where we'd have every media center with some air conditioning in the district, and that would take us several months. But the reality of a large-scale air conditioning across all buildings is high cost. And Mr. Groginski and Mr. Wall will be making a presentation at the July Board Meeting as to what that price would be. But that committee would then be also looking at, you know, the question of air conditioning. So I just wanted everyone to be aware of that.
Before you go?
Yes.
Will the committee consider not just the ninth grade academy, but collegiate-type academies at Henry Ford College as well?
Yes. Thank you for catching that. That was another area that would be mentioned.
So all high school options alike at Michael Berry Center? I would like to suggest that the committee visit some of the sites so that they can see what kind of infrastructure we're talking about. We discussed this a little bit in building insight. And I think that people should know that we're not just talking about superfluous or fluff-type projects. We're talking about buildings that have interior rooms that might reach 100 degrees, kids that don't feel well, and then have to perform on tests. So I'd like to suggest that the committee members try to visit some schools that they're assigned, or that they're considered.
They recommended that to me at a previous meeting, and one of the things I did is I came back to the team, and so what we've come up with is something maybe even a little better. The first meeting will be at ASC, but then all the subsequent meetings will be at the schools.
Good.
So the entire committee of the infrastructure will actually hold the meetings. Five of them will be in different schools that will take to get a flavor for what's going on in the district. Thank, you know, with that recommendation.
So will they all be old buildings, or will some of them possibly be one of our newer, better?
We'd like to look at all, so a newer and older building, you know.
Thank you. Good.
Dr. Maliko, before you move on, I keep saying committee. Can you explain to us, I mean, comment to the audience what the committee's going to consist of?
So my team has been working, and what we did is we went back to the strategic plan as to who we invited, and so what we're going to be doing is, within the next week or two, there'll be a list of groups that we'll send information and ask them to recommend. So for example, we'll go to different groups, like whether it's the Rotary or the PTA Council, and we'll ask them to send us recommendations for representative. The same would be for the employee groups, like the unions. We'll ask them for representatives. And so we wouldn't necessarily be picking the individual person. We'll go to the groups that represent the community and ask them to send people, and we would include Henry Ford College as another example. And so our team has been looking at that. We also mentioned that the board, if they would like to, it's not required, but, you know, the board can recommend some representatives for the committee as well. As we said, if everyone wanted one, you don't have to, but up to seven, since the board won't be on the committee, and neither will I. I will be at the first meeting to just kind of set the tone with Mr. Weiss as to what the, you know, what is the jurisdiction of the committee and what is the charge. But we, so letters should be going out within the next couple of weeks inviting individuals.
So at this point, we don't have the makeup of the committee? Like, for example, this group gets to pick two people?
Most are just going to be asked to send one. You may have in staff groups, or like a PTA may get two. But part of the reason is because the committee will get so large that we had to keep it to one representative.
What are we looking at, committee?
We were hoping, we're hoping for maybe, we were hoping 35 to 40, but we realized it may go a little higher, and again, it'll be depend on how many people RSVP. I know with the strategic plan, we had a large group, and then we had a core that stuck together of maybe 40 to 50, but we did not have, you know, a 60. So we're hoping to have, you know, 35 to 40 at least on the group.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you for the question. Okay, so retirements. Tonight, we have Linda Ball, 25 years of service. Zelma Ball, 21 years of service. Diana Kooch, nine years of service. Donna Behringer, 18, over 18 years of service. Roxanne Crable, 22 years. Glenda Darren, 14 years. Frank LaCassio, over three years. Susan Martin, five years of service. David Mayoros, 30 years of service. Frank Muth, over 29 years. Nancy Reich, over 36 years. Orsola Sukora, over 19 years. And Lynn Simmons, 30 years of service. We both thank them, congratulate them, and we appreciate their service to the district. If we could show our appreciation. And as I always do, I will be sending a note congratulating them as well.
Next item?
Next item. Recognition and acknowledgments. Oh, sorry. Non-agenda items.
I had a couple on there. So the calendar for the 18-19 Board of Education meetings is in there, and it'll be proposed for a vote for next meeting. So we have that. I wanted to point that out. Also wanted to point out that we have the MHSAA membership that the board has to approve. It's an annual thing we have to do to be part of the Athletic Association at the state level, and so that will be an action item for the next board meeting as well. And I also wanted to mention, we, we will have, just progress right now, we don't anticipate a lot of administrative openings, but we do have, you know, an opening at Woodworth. And so that process is going through, the hope would be to have a recommendation at the next board meeting. The final interview is with me next week. The committees are going through the process. And then just so everyone's aware, you know, in the administrative contract, there is the ability for, you know, administrators to play in for reassignments. So it's a possibility of some assistant principal reassignments as well, based on their rights within the contract, so that's coming. And the last thing I just wanted to mention is, we had a wonderful week last week. It was positive. It was energy on, graduation, and so wanted to congratulate all our graduates, and we had a great team of people that were at all ceremonies. It worked out very well everywhere. It was a little warmer at Etzel. Fortson, the weather was perfect with the cool air, and then we were pretty lucky at Dearborn High because we actually got a window where there wasn't any rain from about a two-hour window. We were lucky to have it outside, and that's the risk. Everyone likes to have it on the football field, but we're always kind of monitoring the weather. So I want to thank the staff, the parents, everyone that came together, the students. Students, congratulations, really, all of our graduates. We still have magnet to go.
We still have magnet.
But, you know, we have, most of them are in, so if we could show appreciation to our students too, I appreciate that. And that's all.
I have a couple of things. I'm not sure if they should be in the commentary, or they might be perfect right over here, so it's going to be directed at you, Dr. Maliko. With Public Act 306 of 2016, that's going to be creeping up on us. I guess I have some questions regarding our third graders. I understand they were just tested a couple of weeks ago, NWEA. When did we get those results?
The NWEA? The building is pretty jolly. Dr. Jokel, you want to come?
Good evening. The NWEA assessments were completed the first week of June, and Dr. Patterson has just finished aggregating, putting all the results together, and getting reports up to the school, so there'll be a report to the board very shortly. And so from that, we'll be able to ascertain exactly where students are, K8, as well as certain K3.
Looking forward to good news.
And we usually have Dr. Patterson will come to the board at some point for a formal presentation, possibly in July or August.
Next item?
The other thing was...
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. I know the late Brian Wiston was honored at the last meeting, and, you know, I watched the meeting, sorry I couldn't make it. But with new interim state superintendent, Sheila Alice, I hope anybody butchered her last name. First thing, first couple of words are remarkable, she wanted to honor and continue the work of the late Brian Wiston at the Michigan Department of Education. And it brings to mind that there was something that was always important to Mr. Wiston, and that was the remedial classes that our students take. So I would like this for to honor Brian at the local level, and keep an eye on our students leaving, graduating from doing public schools, going on to college. I know some other reports that we got, you know, we have different views on the results, but our graduation rates are, you know, exactly where we want them to be. Could be a little bit better. We always, you know, we want to improve there, but at the same time, when our graduates graduate, we want that diploma to have value, so when they go on to Henry Ford College, Wayne State, and other colleges, so they don't have to take remedial classes. Just for, you know, new colleagues on the board, I remember Brian Wiston's first meeting, and he just liked, there's a Calvin Zoo promise, he wanted the Dearborn promise, that if you had to take remedial classes after graduating from doing public schools, that he, we, would pay for it. Then when we looked at the numbers, it wasn't doable, so I guess the better thing to do is just make sure, the less, the better, less remedial classes. And that's it. And that's going to be continuation. I mean, I slash we, we're going to keep an eye, there's a team, and I'd love to see some improvements to that.
And I can tell you too, we had two very positive meetings with the college, and one of which, I know Dr. Nealan has talked about, you know, that articulation with our teachers and our coordinators in the math and language arts, so that's going to be a key moving forward to continue that, at least with Henry Ford College. And then we're trying to enhance our relationships with other universities and local colleges, and some are more responsive than others, you know, is the reality, depending on which group.
We know we have some improvements to pick.
Sure.
We don't have to wait for the results to come.
Yeah. Always, yeah.
Next item, please.
I'm just a little discouraged that after having, you mentioned something, that after having been on the board almost 20 years, I'm kind of shocked that we're still talking about articulating between ourselves and Henry Ford College. If there ought to have been a seamless transition, it should be there, so. That's somewhat discouraging. Dr. Mead has always been on this topic. And I agree with Trustee Barry's comments. So I, the time is now to get on these things, to make sure that our diploma has value, and I do believe it does. But there is, there is a responsibility also at the college and university level to, to make sure that students who know something are able to prove that. There's been a sense in a lot of testing that, and one of the reasons some people suspect that testing's been changed a lot is to prove failure. So I hope that that's not the case, and that testing is valid, so that if students are able to pass at our high school, they should be able to pass at Henry Ford College as well, math and English. And sometimes the summer learning loss is responsible. We're all cognizant of that, but sometimes colleges and universities benefit by having students repeat classes too. So I hope that's not, Anthony, I'm just discouraged that across the state of Michigan, but at this point, that we wouldn't have articulation and agreement between universities. We're one system, we're one state, and we have a lot of things to work on, so that shouldn't be one that we should be working on after such a long time.
Just to follow up on a comment that our diplomas have been amazing things. I mean, we heard last week, you know, where all our students would go, I was like that. I should have said, have value for all of our graduates.
Yeah.
That's what I should clarify.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Our diplomas do have value.
They definitely do. We had 1,200 or so kids that graduated, kids that are young adults, and they're, I see a couple of them here, I think. They're awesome. I mean, sitting on the stage with so many of them brings me tears. They're going on to great things, so congratulations to all of them.
Well, I have great confidence in Dr. Nealan from the college and the people from P through 12, working together to identify early students that are behind in reading, writing, and math, so that they can make up the difference before they get to the college. And however the college can help, that is important too. So we're on the right track.
That's right.
Okay. Next item, please.
Now we'll go into recognition and acknowledgements. First item is commendations, and we have two juniors from Dearborn High who are reading combination, and they are Tanya Hamud and Deena Badun.
They're here. They are here. They're here. They are here.
Commendations to all of the graduating seniors who were recognized for their academic achievements on May 17th at Superintendent's Honor's Night. Students who have maintained a 3.6 GPA for seven consecutive semesters were invited to attend. Thank you to all of the staff and volunteers who helped out at Honor's Night, an enjoyable and memorable event for the students, their families, and the teachers who were recognized. Special appreciation to David Mustonin, Sherry Candia, Eric, to Shigri, Shigri, sorry. Jacob Vera and Leslie Herrick, from the Communications Department, as well as Coordinator for Effective Education, Denise Charles, and Secretary Joanne Harris for their work on the event. Commendations to the 150 students from Dearborn High School, Etzel Ford, and Fortson, who participated in the district's ninth annual Student Leadership Diversity Summit this spring. The summit brings student leaders together to work to dispel stereotypes, promote unity, and discuss current issues impacting our community and the teens residing here. Student leaders who participate in programs such as Anti-Bullying, Link Crew, Social Justice, Diversity Club, and Hear to Hear were invited to attend. They learn new skills during student-led workshops on topics like microaggression, team mental health, and Charity Week. Special thanks to the district's social workers and other staff members who worked with the students to plan and host the Student Leadership Diversity Summit. Samira Ali, Dave Barber, Maggie Barhumay, Kathy Galdes, Norma Harb, Kelly Herrick, David Mustonin, Mary Pop, and Stacy Rumler. Commendations to the Etzel Ford Performing Arts Department on receiving 22 nominations at the annual Dearborn Area Theater Association Awards. The school received two awards in the following categories. Outstanding Achievement in Direction of a One Act for the Bully Game directed by Etzel Ford Theater teacher Robert Doyle, and Outstanding Achievement in a One Act for Seven produced by Robert Doyle. Congratulations to the entire cast, crew, and production teams on an outstanding year for the Etzel Ford Theater. Commendations to Etzel Ford Varsity Basketball Coach Ibrahim Badun for being selected as a finalist for Regional Coach of the Year. Mr. Badun led the team to a league and district championship this year. He was selected as Regional Coach of the Year nominee representatives of the Detroit Public School League, Downriver League, Michigan Metro Athletic Conference, and Western Wayne Athletic Conference. Congratulations, Coach Badun. Commendations to many Dearborn High School, Dearborn High School seniors who were awarded college scholarships. Congratulations to Nadine Vazey, who received the Olive Branch, Masonic Lodge, and Grand Lodge Scholarship in the amount of $5,000 in recognition of her academic transcripts, career goals, plus school and non-school-related activities. In addition, the scholarship, Nadine, received a plaque at her honors convocation signed by the Worship Master and Lodge Secretary. Congratulations to Leila Jawad, who was awarded $4,000 Dearborn Rotary Club Hugh M. Archer Memorial Scholarship. The selective award was based on Leila's high-level academic achievement, demonstration of leadership, community service, and ethical standards. Congratulations to Dearborn High Senior Maya Hemka, who was awarded the prestigious Dearborn Rotary Club Harry A. Sisson Scholarship for the amount of $8,000. After a written application and personal interview, Maya was chosen based on her altruistic community service and leadership achievements. Maya Hemka was awarded $4,000 as a semi-finalist of the Elks National Foundation Most Valuable Student Program. The criteria for this award are based on leadership, academic achievement, and community involvement. Commendations to the Dearborn High Theater Program on receiving 20 awards at the 2018 Dearborn Area Theater Association Award Celebration in late May. This is the most awards given to any school in the area. Honors included the award for the Best Play of the Year with individual student honors in a variety of categories going to the following Dearborn High students. Andrew Lincolnship, Ben Blessing, Will Bryan, Graham Dellis, Cassidy Dura, Katie Garber, Scout Grimal, Brandon Heston, Sandra Keem, Sabrina Junie, Anna Karub, Josh Casron, Angel Crossick, Sarah McDonald, Hannah Pfeifer, and Heather Slannick. Additional awards to Dearborn High were Outstanding Direction of a Play, Outstanding Musical Direction, Outstanding Choreography, and Outstanding Costume Design. Congratulations to DHDHS Theater and Teacher Greg Viscomia and local music teacher Carmel Atkins on receiving awards for their work with the students in the theater program. Commendations to the Dearborn High School seniors, Bo Bryan, Scout Grimal, and Sam Jotrim on receiving scholarships from the Dearborn Area Theater Association. Commendations to the Dearborn High School Business and Professional Association student members who advanced to the national competition in Dallas, Texas after outstanding success in local and state competitions. Twelve of the 13 students who attended the conference placed in the top nine of their events. The small business management team took second place in the nation, moving up from their third-place finish in 2017. Congrats team members Adam Vazey, Ahmed Shibshib, Leila Jawad, and Maya Hadu. In the category of Advanced Interview Skills, Maya Hemka, third, Leila Jawad, fifth, and Nadine Vazey, sixth, placed out of 51. Economic Research Team, Ali Hidus, Ali Hamadi, Ali Osman, and Mohammed Daush, sixth place out of 2018. Extemporaneous Speech, Maya Hemka, ninth, Nassim Abu Halawich, 39th, placed out of 48. Fundamental spreadsheet applications, Anthony Alaziz, third out of 71. Interview Skills, Mohammed Daush, fourth out of 44. Java Programming, Anthony Alaziz, eighth out of 53. Virtual Multimedia and Promotion Individual, Jared Casron, second out of 10. Commendations to Dearborn High School senior Mohammed Rida, being one of the only 22 students in Michigan to earn Microsoft Office 2016 Master Level Certification and a Microsoft Certification Backpack. In order to earn the Master Level Certification, Mohammed had to pass five exams, including Microsoft Word Basic, Word Advanced, Excel Basic, Excel Advanced, Access or Outlook, and PowerPoint. Congratulations, Mohammed. Commendations to the Dearborn High School Girls' Varsity Tennis Teams on qualifying for the state finals with a second place finish this spring at the MHSAA Regional Competition in Maloneo. Commendations to members of the Dearborn High School Robotics Team, whose success earned an invitation to participate in the World Robotics Competition this spring. The team, titled Orange Crush, did well at the district-level qualifying tournaments and state competitions in Saginaw, which earned their spot in the international competition. Thank you to parent volunteers and robotic advisors, Iona Veston and Margaret Lincolnship for helping the team prepare for the competition. Congratulations, pioneers. Commendations to the Fortson High School students who were selected to receive the prestigious BRAM Scholarship at the University of Michigan Ann Arbor for 2018-2019. The scholarship includes full costs of tuition at University of Michigan Ann Arbor. Congratulations to Reem Abu, Abu Rukar, Halal Vazey, Norfaqeeh, Fatima Taj on receiving this honorable recognition of academic achievement and community service. Commendations to Fortson High School students in the Women's Ensemble for earning a one-top rating for their performance at the Michigan School Vocal Association Solo and Ensemble Festival. Thank you to Fortson vocal students who received many compliments for their kindness, helpfulness, and positivity while hosting the statewide event. Commendations for the Chamber Choir from Fortson High School for their performance at Michigan School Vocal Music Association State Choral Festival. Congratulations to the Fortson Vocal Musical students and teacher Annette Hora on their outstanding performance at competitions this year. Commendations to a group of 40 Fortson students for their efforts to clean up Hemlock Park after an area in the park was left amass by a group of teens for the previous night. A citizen called Fortson about the mess in that park. Principal Hayam Al Kudre contacted Fortson students who, in the spirit of community service, volunteered their time to assist with the cleanup. Thank you for showing great tractor spirit. Commendations to Fortson seniors for their outstanding participation in completing the free application for federal student aid. 364 students completed this form by mid-May this year compared to 283 who completed the form in the previous spring. This 11% improvement in participation earned Fortson the title of Most Improved FAFSA Completion for Large Schools in the race to the FAFSA Light Challenge. As a reward, the senior class won a VIP movie screening at Imagine Theater in Royal Oak. Special thanks to the representatives from Henry Ford College who helped students complete the federal student aid forms. Congratulations, tractors. Commendations to athletic trainer Alonso Brogins and Fortson girls soccer coach Bobby Murray for their swift action to assist an injured player during a game in Rose Point. Mr. Brogins was not required to be at the game, but he traveled on the bus with his team. When the Fortson player was injured, he acted swiftly and perfectly to assist the student, holding her in place as a precaution for over 20 minutes, waiting for the ambulance to arrive. He and Coach Murray then traveled to the hospital with the student. They were there when the parents arrived and were able to calmly communicate with the parents the condition of their child. These two gentlemen acted with professionalism and compassion during a very tense situation. Fortunately, the student was okay and suffered only a minor injury. Commendations to the members of the Fortson Robotics Team on earning a first place at the district-level qualifying tournaments in Southfield and Maloneo. Their success earned the team a spot to compete in the state-level competition in Saginaw this spring. Special thanks to the team mentors from Ford Motor Company and Fortson teacher and team sponsor, Ms. Renee Garcia, for her help in preparing the team for the competitions. Commendations to Miller students and staff members who have been hard at work making the world a better place. The students participated in Jump Up for Heart for the 22nd consecutive year, raising $1,153 for the American Heart Association. To help fight cancer, they also collected $1,583 in a fundraiser for leukemia and lymphoma society. Thank you to the Miller School community for your outstanding charitable efforts. Commendations to McCully Yunus, parent Renee.
Commendations to McCullough Yunus, parent Renee Newman, for outstanding leadership and support, which has contributed to the growth and success of Dearborn Public Schools' robotics programs. Among her many roles in the last three years, Mrs. Newman has served as a mentor, webmaster, accountant, publicist, strategist, and volunteer coordinator. In 2015, her work with students, parents, and staff was key in launching the district's first middle-school robotics team. The MCU Bots at McCullough Yunus School, thanks to Mrs. Newman's efforts in 2017, McCullough was able to host the district's first robotics competition. The event was a great success, with hundreds of students competing for middle schools from across the region. This led to additional robotics events in December 2017 and May 2018. McCullough and the Dearborn Public Schools thank Renee Newman for her dedication and volunteer leadership.
Commendations to Lori on earning Green School Status. The school's activities, lessons, and field trips have been recognized by Wayne County as qualifying acts in reducing the school's carbon footprint.
Commendations to the Lori seventh-grade Vocal Music Students who earned a first-division rating, the highest rating awarded at the Michigan School Vocal Music Association Choral Festival this spring. The assessment is a very rigorous rubric. With the high score, students were eligible to participate in the state festival on April 26th. Congratulations to the Vocal Music Students on this significant accomplishment.
Commendations to Lori's school on their first time participating in Green Day activities, raising $700 to benefit the Muscular Dystrophy Association. On March 16th, students donated a minimum of $1 each to the MDA to wear green and put their name on shamrock-shaped cutouts displayed in the school. The money raised will go towards children with muscular dystrophy, ALS, and related muscle debilitating diseases that take away physical strength and independence of life. Special appreciation to Lori National Junior Honor Society for coordinating the Green Day activities, and thank you to all participants here.
Commendations to Lori's students in Mr. Lohaus Science Classes, who won recognition for their proposal for developing a solution to wood chips entering the sewer system through storm drains. The students won third place after entering their idea in the Detroit Zoological Society's Green Solution Contest, and they received $400 to fund putting their proposal into action. Congratulations.
There were an awful lot of items there, and we should be congratulated for all of the efforts at the end of the year. But I do want to mention one thing, the FERPA. Having the students fill out the FERPA is just very, very important, because a lot of the universities don't even give out scholarships unless students have completed the FERPA.
The FAFSA?
FAFSA.
FAFSA?
Yeah, FAFSA, excuse me. So it's a, that's really a worthy accomplishment. Thank you. Trust.
We also got word about a week ago that one of the students at Lindbergh Elementary has been awarded a scholarship from Google for $60,000.
Wow.
Due to artwork that is going to be on the search engine, I think Ms. Peterson could give us more information on that.
He entered a contest, her artwork should be on Google either this week or next, we'll know for sure. They're going to let her know, but they flew her up to California, and she won the $60,000 scholarship.
Wow. Marv.
Yes, sir.
I have something, too. Hussein Kuttig, he's a tractor on the soccer team at Fortson. He's a sophomore, and he's already being looked at by six different colleges. I'm sure if he's junior and senior year, we'll know more, so congratulations to him. Listen, wish him best wishes, because I know what's going to happen when whoever recruits him, he's going to get a scholarship for four years. So, good things going on at Dearborn Public Schools.
Next item, please.
Next item, art show awards.
Susan Briggs to come up, art resource teacher.
Good evening. I'm Susan Briggs, the art resource teacher, and I want to introduce the art teachers that are here with me tonight. Elizabeth Mack is from William Ford, Paige Bruce from Gear Park, Joanne Zucker from Snow, Hannah Dudak from Howe, Nicole Reiner from Bryant, Nikki Cassidy from Dearborn High, and Monica Kowitsky from Dearborn. I think I got everyone. Okay. We're here on behalf of the rest of the art department. Retired art teacher Bob Curtis juried the annual student citywide art show in May. He selected 12 two-dimensional and three-dimensional works to represent Dearborn Public Schools' in the highlights exhibition. And this show is in conjunction with the Dearborn Artist Society, and it's actually hanging right now in the Vajewski Gallery through June 30th, if you have a chance to go see it. One piece from each of the four high school senior artists is also included in the show. Through generous donations from Dearborn Community Arts Council, Village Frame Shop, and Blick Art Supply, all two-dimensional work was framed professionally, and students with three-dimensional work will receive a Blick Art Supply gift card, and each student will also receive a certificate. So these are the students that were chosen, and we'll applaud at the end. Jonathan Luska, a second grader from Duval, created a two-dimensional painting entitled "Feel of Poppies" using tempera and oil pastels, and Mr. Goki is the art teacher. Abraham Carkey, a first grader from Gear Park, created a three-dimensional clay piece entitled "Finn," and Ms. Bruce is the art teacher. Ahmed Hussain, a fifth grader from Snow, created a two-dimensional tempera painting entitled "Scratches," and Ms. Zucker is the art teacher. Jamar Holliday, a student at Howe, created a mixed-media three-dimensional piece entitled "Olympic Trophy," and Ms. Dudak is the art teacher. Mohammed Ahmed, a third grader from William Ford Elementary, created a two-dimensional acrylic painting entitled "Seasonal Birch Trees," and Ms. Mank is the art teacher. Mohammed Bretta, a fourth grader from River Oaks, created a three-dimensional paper sculpture entitled "Mysterious Creature," and Mr. Kares is the art teacher. Emma Basik, an eighth grader from Bryant Middle School, created a untitled two-dimensional mixed-media piece, and Ms. Reiner is the art teacher. Grace Shook, a sixth grader from STEM Middle School, created a three-dimensional clay piece entitled "Umbrian," and Mr. Markiaki is the art teacher. Batul Somasi, a 10th grader from Michael Berry Career Center, created a two-dimensional digital print entitled "Detroit Bridge," and her teachers are Mr. Aquino and Mr. McMullin. Samantha Hassett, a ninth grader from Edsel Ford High School, created a three-dimensional pewter casting entitled "My Leaf," Ms. Daly is the art teacher. Ali Hamood, a 12th grader from Fortson High School, created a two-dimensional colored pencil piece entitled "Ivan," and Ms. Curtis is the art teacher. Matthew Bolger, an 11th grader from Dearborn High School, created a three-dimensional wood chalice designed in drawing class, and he created it in woodshop. So it was collaboration with Ms. Kowitsky and Mr. Seagullon are the teachers.
Dearborn High School has a senior artist who created a charcoal self-portrait, and her teacher is Ms. Cassidy. Lauren West is the Edsel Ford High School senior artist, who created a colored pencil self-portrait, and her teacher is Ms. Patronidi. Fatima Taj, the Fortson High School senior artist, created a cut-paper self-portrait, her art teacher is Ms. Curtis. Marky Gregoriwitz, from Michael Berry Career Center, is the senior artist. She created a digital print entitled "Storm." Mr. Aquino and Mr. McMullin are her teachers. So congratulations to the students and to their art teachers. And each year, Superintendent Maleko has selected artwork from the show to be framed and displayed in his office for the next year. This year's superintendent's award goes to Chloe Rahal. She's a 10th grader from Dearborn High School, and she created a two-dimensional acrylic painting entitled "A Moment in Time," and Ms. Cassidy is her art teacher. And we'd like to present this now to Dr. Maleko. You might have to rearrange your office a little bit.
Get a bigger office.
We'll have to find a place. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's beautiful. Super town.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Launch Scholarship.
I believe we have Mr. Kevin Sutton here to present this scholarship.
Good evening.
Great pleasure to be here to hear about so many wonderful accomplishments for your students. My name is Kevin Sutton. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Lusk Albertson. As many of you know, our firm works exclusively with public school districts throughout the state of Michigan. We are very committed to public education in everything we do every single day. In furtherance of that mission, several years ago, we founded our Launch Scholarship, and we sought to identify graduating students in our client districts that represented the top ideals: high academic achievement, leadership within their building, and, most importantly, giving back to their community and community service. This year, we received over 300 applications from more than 50 school districts from graduating students. Trying to get that list down to 12 finalists was very difficult, and trying to pick four winners was nearly impossible. But I'm very happy to say that I'm here this evening to let you know that one of your students, a Dearborn High senior, Marwan Vazi, is one of our launch winners this year. I'm going to embarrass him for a few moments. He asked me what the agenda was back there, and I said, "You're going to stand up here, and I'm going to embarrass you." He has all of the things on paper that you would expect from an outstanding student: a GPA north of 4.0, involvement in AP courses, National Honor Society, a varsity athlete, all of those great things that we see from so many students. The thing that struck me as I looked at Marwan's application was the list of involvement that he has had in the community. I'll be honest, the first time I read it, I thought, "It's not possible one student could do all this stuff." Blood drives, and working with disabled students, and helping out in every possible way. And I read a little deeper into his application, and he says, and I want to read this to you, because I think it's central to who he is. He says, "Philanthropy is central to my identity, and my leadership role with the Red Cross illustrates this vividly. I serve as a host and coordinator for Red Cross blood drives, a role which has become more vital as I watched my grandfather take his last breath due to blood shortage. In response, I hosted a blood drive in his honor, and in doing so, I found the power in blood. By urging donors, I knew I was giving someone another birthday, another anniversary, another friend. I was giving someone another chance at life." To see that sort of maturity and depth of perspective from a young man was truly impressive, and when I spoke to him during his interview, he absolutely knocked our socks off. He was everything and more that he was on paper, and I felt, as we talked to him, this is somebody who not only talks the talk, they walk the walk. He talked about wanting to be a role model for his community, be an inspiration to other students who are younger than him. He's already doing that, and he's going to do even more great things as he heads to Ann Arbor and the University of Michigan. And so it is our great pleasure to announce one of our 2018 Launch Scholarship winners, Mr. Marwan Vazi. My kids are going to be disappointed, because they were thinking maybe they get one of these as I run around. But he gets to take this home, and don't take this one to the bank. And we'll find David, and we're going to put you with David. Thank you so much.
Acknowledgement of donations.
And we have Ms. Shannon Peterson. And we do have a lot.
She's getting the longest there.
Toward the end of the year, it gets longer.
Yeah, boy.
That's nice.
I was going to say, I'm not turning it down.
All right. A donation of $1,495 has been offered to Dearborn High School by the Dearborn Educational Foundation to be used for VPA registration. A donation of $103.92 has been offered to Henry Ford Elementary by the Dearborn Educational Foundation to be used for sensory tools. A donation of $317.95 has been offered to Henry Ford Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for wobble seats. A donation of $1,000 has been offered to Whitmore Bowles Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for C Pen readers. A donation of $100 has been offered to the Dearborn Education Foundation by David Hecker in memory of State Superintendent Brian Wiston. A donation of $25 has been offered to the Dearborn Education Foundation by the Dearborn Federation of Teachers in memory of State Superintendent Brian Wiston. A donation of $100 has been offered to the Dearborn Education Foundation by Norma Jean Sass in memory of State Superintendent Brian Wiston. A donation of $500 has been offered to the Dearborn Education Foundation by the Exchange Public Dearborn in memory of State Superintendent Brian Wiston. A donation of $100 has been offered to the Dearborn Education Foundation by Brenda Votras in memory of State Superintendent Brian Wiston. A donation of $100 has been offered to the Dearborn Education Foundation by Dawn and Kenneth Meidel in memory of State Superintendent Brian Wiston. A donation of $50 has been offered to the Dearborn Education Foundation by Public Policy Associates Incorporated in memory of State Superintendent Brian Wiston. A donation of $250 has been offered to the Dearborn Education Foundation by Ken Haroun in memory of State Superintendent Brian Wiston. A donation of $50 has been offered to the Dearborn Education Foundation by Early and Candice Poleski in memory of State Superintendent Brian Wiston. A donation of $100 has been offered to the Dearborn Education Foundation by Jim and Darlene Schoolmaster in memory of State Superintendent Brian Wiston. A donation of $2,170 has been offered to the Becker Elementary School through Ripple Donors Choose.org to be used for science and art activities. A donation of $1,118.35 has been offered to Cato Preschool through Ripple Donors Choose.org to be used for classroom furniture. A donation of $539.2 has been offered to McCullough Yunus School through Ripple's Donors Choose to be used for sensory materials. A donation of $286 has been offered to McCullough Yunus through Ripple's Donors Choose.org to be used for literacy materials. A donation of $444.85 has been offered to McCullough Yunus School through Ripple's Donors Choose.org to be used for house area materials. A donation of $150 has been offered to Fortson High School by Mittens for Detroit to be used for refugee students in need. A donation of $200 has been offered to McCullough Yunus School by Mittens for Detroit to be used to provide, to low-income refugee students. A donation of $195 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by South End Dinner Group to be used for Salina's 100-year anniversary celebration. A donation of $190 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by South End Dinner Group to be used for Salina's 100-year anniversary celebration. They must have donated twice. A donation of $300 has been offered to Nalan Elementary School by Talal Bazzie to be used by Special Education ASD Center Program End of Year Picnic. A donation of $151,052 has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by Healthy Dearborn Beaumont School Health through Integrated Nutrition and Exercise Strategies Shine Grant. A donation of six boxes of music has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by Jane Capella to be used by the music staff in their classrooms. A donation of executive furniture, a refrigerator, filing cabinets, and whiteboards has been offered to Dearborn High School by Sagatti USA to be used in the administrative offices and conference room at Dearborn High. A donation of $1,620 has been offered to Salina Intermediate by Khalid Abdullah to be used for PBIS field trips for Salina Intermediate. A donation of $300 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by Ghazi Mahfahia to be used for PBIS field trips for Salina Intermediate. A donation of $449 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by Khalid Abdullah to be used for the Cedar Point trip. A donation of $1,000 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by Khalid Abdullah to be used to charter a bus to Cedar Point. A donation of $350 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by Khalid Abdullah to be used for the PBIS field trips for Salina Intermediate. A donation of $350, it's on their twice, has been offered to Salina Intermediate by Khalid Abdullah to be used for PBIS field trips for Salina Intermediate. A donation of $1,620 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by Khalid Abdullah to be used for PBIS field trips. A donation of $4,000 has been offered to Salina Elementary School by Access to be used for leveled literacy intervention kits. A donation of $509.84 has been offered to Cato Preschool through Ripple's Donors Choose.org to be used for house area materials. A donation of $561.06 has been offered to Cato Preschool through Ripple's Donors Choose.org to be used for wobble chairs, stability bells, legs, and wobble cushions. A donation of $491.47 has been offered to Salina Elementary School through Ripple's Donors Choose.org to be used for house area materials, and a donation of $453.92 has been offered to Salina Elementary School through Ripple's Donors Choose.org to be used for magnetic manipulatives. That's it.
Nice job.
Let's give her.
You do not need remedial reading. Next item. Oh, wait a minute, timeout. Yes.
Dr. Meda, I'd just like to say, for people that maybe don't think about it, these were donations to a scholarship for, or in commemoration of Brian Wiston. And of course, it's richly deserved, and it's a great way to commemorate someone, but I would just like to remind families, there's lots of money in our community. People don't need to be a state superintendent to commemorate someone. The young man that was up here sponsored an event and organized a blood drive, which was fabulous, in honor of his grandfather. That's amazing. But individual, regular people can double their pleasure, double their fun, as they say, by donating a scholarship to any student. I mean, they can designate the college, like Henry Ford College, and it does a further good work in that the student that receives it is, I mean, they're just elated to receive it. So that's what's so great about this time of year, is that we hear so much of this good news. Dr. Maleko, we did not hear this year, I was kind of disappointed. We heard the number of graduates at the high schools, but we did- but we didn't hear how many millions of dollars are, I didn't catch it. Did you hear that?
We're going to have that done next board meeting. We're actually putting that number together right now. So actually, we contacted the principals just this morning to get the number.
It's always a nice number to hear, because it's millions and millions of dollars that students won't have to pay back on student loans. So I would just like to remind people that they can honor someone in their family by making a donation, and the student is overwhelmed to receive it, so. Usually, I think those are done through the education foundations, but, you know, anybody who's interested can contact the college, the district, whomever, so. Thank you.
Next item, please.
Those numbers were mentioned at the graduations at every school, but combination, here we see those. Next item, citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who are signed in by 7:10 p.m. by submitting a blue card to the secretary may speak at this time. It's the end of the year, and everybody's happy. I don't have any blue cards. Imagine that.
Okay. Next item, please.
Approval of minutes. Approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meetings. Policy Committee Meeting, May fifteenth, 2018, Board Report seventeen dash one twenty-one. Executive Session, Closed Negotiations, May fifteenth, 2018, Board Report seventeen dash one twenty-two. Regular P through twelve meeting, May fifteenth, 2018, Board Report seventeen dash one two three. Recommended Action, Make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
Someone.
It's been moved and seconded for the approval of minutes. All those in favor indicate, yes, Trustee Elaine, excuse me.
Celery.
Well, I'll have to look up a little more.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah. On page nineteen, discussion item number eight, section A, was talking about Mr. Del Judas, and it said that he was a nineteen ninety-six Ford, or it said he was a ninety-six graduate of Fortson High School. That'd have to be maybe eighteen ninety-six, because I know he's, he's not a nineteen ninety-six graduate. So I think there's an error there. Yeah, the error is in the date, because he coached for thirty-five years, so those numbers don't add up. So, Mrs. Harris, if you would check on that.
Six, maybe sixty-six. Because I think he was around Michael's, yeah, Michael graduated in sixty-six.
Eighteen ninety-six.
No, I don't think. I don't want to insult him.
Let the man show.
Yeah, he'll, he'll be.
No, I think it was sixty-six.
Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor of this motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed?